If you call this meeting in order, please rise for the pledge allegiance and the invocation following.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Well called, please.
Green.
Here.
Lafore.
Here.
Ms. Stravich.
Here.
Ricks.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Yarick.
Here.
Good to see everybody here tonight. We move on to approval of the minutes for the city council meeting of September 21st. Is there a motion?
So moved.
What's been made and supported. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Be in not, all in favor, the motion is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to audience comments on any non-agenda items. If anybody would like to address the city council, we would ask that you would come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Looks like we can move on. Adoption of agenda, Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes.
City Council, any changes?
No.
Motion to accept the agenda as presented would be in order.
So moved.
Support.
What's been made and supported, is there any discussion? Be in not, all in favor, the motion is signified by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
What's been made and supported, there's no discussion on the motion, all in favor, the motion is signified by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion does pass. We move on to items for consideration, which we have six this evening. First one being consideration of fiscal year 2015-16 city audit presentation. Mr. City Manager?
The council is scheduled to receive a presentation from the city auditors Plant Moran on the fiscal year 14-15 audit. Again this year, the audit report will reflect the necessary changes from the accounting standards and the auditor's presentation to the city council will express that in spite of the financial challenges faced by many communities, the city is maintaining a solid financial position.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is Dave Harrington, the partner in charge of the city of Richmond's audit. With me is Keith Shemansky, our manager on the audit, and we're here tonight to present the highlights of the audit results for June 30th, 2015. And as in the past, I get to present the conclusion on the audit, which is the best conclusion you get, which is, now it's called a non-modified opinion, which is the best opinion you can get from your auditor saying the financial information included in your 44-page audit is accurate and should be used and relied upon for going forward in your decisions. And you should feel great about it, especially in a year when you had a transition in the finance department after Marilyn working here so many years. So the audit went incredibly smoothly. It was, I mentioned, I think I would say in 30 years of seeing transitions and working audits for communities, that was as smooth as it went. So well done to everybody involved and so that's the result of the audit, that's our opinion. What we thought we'd also do is highlight some of the financial, which is really the important part, of where you stood at June 30th, 2015, and reiterate some of what the city manager mentioned, the solid financial position that the city is in. So with that, Keith is going to have a few slides on excerpts from the audit, which, you have the slide packet in front of you. If you have any questions throughout the presentation, feel free to jump in, and then we'll be happy to take any questions on the full 44-page audit or any of our reports to council. Keith?
Good evening. Included in the slide package are four slides that highlight some of the financial results for both the general fund and the water and sewer funds. The first slide is a five-year history of general fund revenues. As you can see, they've been fairly consistent over the last four years at about $3.6 million. In 2011, when property taxes were still a bit higher, taxable values in particular, total revenues were $3.9 million. If we were to carry this back just a few years farther, in 2008, total general fund revenues would have been about $700,000 higher than they were in 2015. So I think that shows you the perspective of what's taken place over the last seven or eight years in terms of taxable value declines. Property taxes are by far the largest revenue source of the general fund, which is common among most local units of government. They make about two-thirds of the total, and the second-largest revenue source is state revenue sharing, which has grown a bit over the last few years. On page two, we see a similar five-year history for the general fund expenditures. Similar to revenues, you can see they've leveled off in the last few years and are settling in right around $3.6 million. The largest category of expenditures is public safety, which again is fairly typical of local units of government. That total increased slightly from 2014 to 15 due to the purchase of police vehicles making up about $140,000 of the increase. If you were to compare the $3.6 million of revenues and the similar amount of expenditures, you'd arrive at the change we see on slide number three. Here we're looking at a comparison of fund balance in the general fund over the last five years, as well as what's budgeted for 2016. As you can see, from 2014 to 2015, it was essentially a break-even year. The general fund used just $18,000 of fund balance, which is a tremendous credit to the city manager, or city management and the city council for keeping an eye on the budget, recognizing the changes that have taken place over the last seven years, and bringing the expenditures in line with the resources that are available. To be able to maintain over $1 million of fund balance for community of your size in particular, again, is a tremendous credit to everyone at the city. And as you can see, what's budgeted for 2016 is again probably pretty close to a break-even Finally, on page four, we've got a couple graphs showing the financial results for the water and sewer fund for the last five years. The orange line is operating income, which is essentially usage fees and other operating revenues minus the cost of operations of each of the funds. Any year those are break-even or close to it is a good year. Both funds have maintained strong financial position for several years, so were they to have slightly negative operating income's not a big deal, but in 2015, both of them had positive operating income. The blue line is working capital, which is calculated based on the current assets minus the current liabilities, and that's essentially what's available in terms of water and sewer fund resources to fund any operations or expenditures as they arise. And as you can see, those have both maintained steady working capital amounts and even increased in 2015 as well. So all around positive financial results for both the general fund and water and sewer funds. Are there any questions on the financials?
I think we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, thank you, and happy to take any other questions related to any other documents that we provided to council.
You did a very good job again, and we appreciate it. Appreciate you working with our new treasure, which I know you've done in the past.
Yes, good recruiting, by the way.
Employee, so funny how you say it was one of the best ever, you know? But no, thank you very much again.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Is there a motion, council?
Move to receive and file the city of Richmond, June 30th, 2015 financial report with supplemental information from Planton and Moran LLC.
Support.
What's been made and supported, is there any discussion? Pretty much right where we thought we were going to be. Another great job by the administration of keeping us up to date on where we were at. It makes our job a lot easier as council people to continue to make those decisions that we feel is best for the community. So, very good. Hats off again to our new treasure for staying on top of everything, everybody working together to make sure the transition worked well. Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Again, appreciate everyone involved, the staff working with us. Of course, you know, budget is always still a very painful time, the budget hearings of actually trying to keep it under control, but I'm glad to see, the proof is in the pudding that the hard work of staff and us working together to keep us in a solid financial future despite everything that's going on.
Very good. Anybody else? Any audience comments? Back to the table. All in favor, the motion is signified by saying aye. Aye? Against? Motion passes. Thank you again. Item number two is consideration of bid award winter maintenance contract. Mr. City Manager?
City council is scheduled to consider awarding the winter maintenance contract for the city offices. The contract is for as-needed services, the final contract amount being entirely weather-dependent. Stafford Landscaping received the positive references from those that we checked. They did considerable amount of local work, and they were the low bidder on the bid, and we are recommending that council go with them.
Okay, is there a motion before discussion?
I'll make a motion to award the 2015-16 winter maintenance contract to Stafford Landscaping with expenses charged to appropriate line item contractual services, building and grounds city hall, general fund, and appropriate line item building maintenance contract, building and grounds police post, general fund.
Second. What's been made and supported? Interesting that out of eight categories there, they were higher than another bidder, but the two big ones there, the parking lot and the drive salving and sidewalk and building entrances, definitely they were the lowest, which made the difference there. And I don't, I've never heard of this company before, they do have the equipment necessary to handle us and everything?
I defer to Jim, I know he's talked to both them and their references.
Yeah, they do. They expressed interest this summer in doing our grass-cutting contract, and they were second bidder there. So they're in town, you see them, now that you know the name, you'll notice them all around here.
Okay.
But they, they're a local contractor, and their references are very good, and I'm confident, and they did submit their equipment that they have available with their bid, so...
Very good, very good. I know we've had somebody else that bid out other entities in Macomb County, and they didn't have the equipment, and we paid for it anyhow, so just wanted to make sure.
And over the years, we've had problems with this particular contract, so I know Jim knows that as well.
Very good. Any other comments? Questions? Any audience participation? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to item number three, consideration of replacement of the wastewater treatment plant's geotube. Mr. City Manager?
In 2013, the city purchased three geo bags to improve the sludge dewatering capability at the wastewater treatment plant to help us reduce costs at that facility. Council tonight is scheduled to consider the purchase of one additional bag. The city and Tetra Tech are still working to find the best way to utilize these bags and to improve the process at the plant, and what we found is that by using two bags in tandem and switching back and forth, it's kind of more effective for our operations out there. The first two bags that we purchased are now full and need to be kind of set aside for, to completely dry out. We have a third in service, but by placing this fourth bag in line, purchasing this fourth bag, they'll be able to alternate back from the third to the fourth, back and forth. It allows a little time to rest and works better than just having one bag in operation by itself. So Tetra Tech has asked Jim and I to bring to council the consideration of purchasing one additional bag, and we're in agreement with that.
Very good. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to purchase a 75 diameter by 86-foot long geotube for the wastewater treatment plant sludge operations in the estimated amount of $5,617 worth of expense charged to appropriate line item contractual service sewer treatment plant sanitary sewer fund.
Support. What's been made and support? Discussion?
I have a question. Is, it has to do with like environmental green things, would this be a more environmentally-friendly option versus the other way, or are they pretty much the same?
I'm not sure if one is actually more environmentally-friendly, it's just a more cost-effective to us. Using the old way, it was all land applied to the fields, and you were never drying it out completely. By using the bags, you're able to take that sludge and get it almost completely dry, and then you just take that dry material to the landfill. And the landfill costs are less than trucking and taking it to the fields. Am I summarizing that somewhat correctly?
Well, the other option that is there is we can find a farmer that is willing to take the drier sludge, that you would go out, like you say, with your spreader, for instance. There's rigs at work that would fall under, but that would be allowable. So if we could, basically, we could still put that on farm for fertilizer and soil condition. So if we could do that, now we're going to eliminate the trucking charge and the landfill charge, which makes it even more cost-effective to do. So it's either going to end up in the landfill because we can't, don't have a farmer to take it, or it's going to go to farm fields under a drier condition.
But we use the geo bag no matter what? If it went to a farm, let's say, we would use the geo bag?
The geo bag is what we're currently using now.
Right. And but instead of hauling it to the landfill, if we found a farmer, we would just take the geo bag to the farm?
You would still thicken it in the geo bag first, okay.
Right, okay.
Where the geo bag came from, at four cents a gallon plus and everything else going to land, the sludge hauler, I mean, it got beyond the point to where that was cost-effective to deal with it. By going with the geo bags from our initial test, every time that we don't have to go to land with liquid application, you're saving $10,000. So I, we haven't had to haul three times so far, so I have no doubts, somewhere in the vicinity of $25,000 to $30,000, you will have less cost when we finally open those bags next summer, right now, and load up with a front-end loader into a 20-yard truck and take it to the landfill. That net cost to take it there versus paying that sludge hauler to de-water your tanks, take it out to the field, disc it in, et cetera, et cetera, you're running about $10,000 for every 500,000 gallons that we thicken and get rid of. So it is more cost-effective the way we're doing it right now, and that'll be showing out next summer when we open the bags and dispose of it one way or another.
Okay. Thank you.
But the bag stays at the plant, it's almost the size of our drying bed, so whether you're taking it to the landfill or taking it to the farmer field, you're just slicing open that bag and then disposing of the contents.
The bag goes, the bag goes to the landfill too, I mean, once the sludge is out of it.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anything else?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
Just appreciate that we're trying different things and opportunities to, you know, make this more efficient.
Anything else? Any audience comments on this item? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye? Against? Motion does pass. Item number four is consideration of approving Synergy Central contract wastewater treatment plant sludge disposal. Mr. City Manager?
City administration is requesting council consider approving a contract with Synergy for the disposal of sludge. As I mentioned in the previous background brief or item, we're still learning the most efficient way to utilize the bags, and what we're finding is that there are times during the winter that we can't put sludge to those bags. That sludge does go into the holding tanks, and then ultimately needs to be removed and gone through the land application process. So even though with the use of the bags, we haven't had to go to the kind of the land application process since 2013, and it's now almost the end of 15, we're still finding that from time to time, we're going to need to do some land application and have a contract with Synergy. We feel it's going to be much less than we did in the past prior to the use of the bags, of course, but we don't know, depending on weather, that number may change over the years. We did budget, I think, $45,000?
Approximately, yes.
In the budget this year, we anticipate that we're going to have about $30,000 worth of land application costs. So we're, we did receive an agreement from Synergy that was reviewed by our city attorney, and we're recommending that council approve that so that we can do, use the agreement when needed.
Very good, thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve entering into the agreement with Synergy Central LLC for sludge disposal and authorize the public service director to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
Support.
What's been made and support? Any discussion? Pretty much a single source?
Pretty much, they're in this field, yeah.
Okay.
And we have had a long-term, prior to the use of the bags, we've had a long-term agreement with them.
Any other comments, questions? Any audience participation on this item? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Again, motion pass. Item number five is consideration of approving the request to sell Good Fellow papers by the Richmond Lions Club. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider the request from the Richmond Lions Club to conduct their annual Good Fellow paper sale on Friday, December 4th, and Saturday, December 5th, 2015. The Lions Club is requesting permission to conduct the sale at the intersections of Main and Division and County Line Road and Sinclair Highway.
Thanks, sir. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the request received from Richmond Lions Club to conduct their Good Fellow paper sale at the intersection of Main, Division, and County Line Road and Sinclair Highway on Friday, December 4th, and Saturday, December 5th, 2015, from dawn to dusk, where the Lions Club agrees that the volunteers will wear fluorescent vests, U-Lite traffic cones, that the Lions Club agree not to be in the Main-Division intersection on Friday, December 5th, from 2:30 to 3:30 p.m., and further Lions agree to sign a liability waiver.
Support.
What's been made and support? Any discussion? Any audience comments? Back to the table. Hope they have good weather. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Our final item for consideration this evening is the request to close M-19 to conduct the annual homecoming parade. Mr. City Manager?
The school is requesting permission to conduct the annual homecoming parade on Friday, October 9th, 2015, beginning at 5:00 p.m. The parade will line up on Festival Drive and continue onto Washington Street to Main and travel south on Main to Division Road, where it will turn towards the west to the high school parking lot.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the request from the Richmond High School to conduct the annual homecoming parade and direct the city clerk to apply to M.D.A. for permission to close M-19 from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. on Friday, October 9th, 2015, to conduct the annual homecoming parade.
Support.
Who was that?
Me.
Dennis? What's been made and support? Discussion? Just like to say thank you to the school superintendent and board of education for making sure that this was back on Main Street. There was discussion that it wasn't going to be on Main Street. It's another one of those longstanding traditions that we have in Richmond, like so many other small communities have. And I would, I would go out and say if the schools need help to organize that, or whatever it takes, that I would personally be more than happy to help them plan for next year so we can keep it on Main Street and keep one more tradition going on in our community, whatever it takes. So anyhow, I appreciate them changing their minds here at the last minute to bring it back on to Main. And go Blue Devils. Any other discussion? Any audience comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye? Against? Motion passes. We move on to city manager's comments, sir.
Tomorrow night, the recreation board will be having their park walk-through at 6:00 p.m., I believe, starting at the community center. They will have one item on their agenda prior to the walk-through discussion on their bylaws related to the number of board members. Also, both boards have corresponded back and forth, and they'll be having a joint meeting between the rec board and the library board on December 1st.
John, did you say December 1st?
Yes. I believe that should be a Tuesday?
Yes.
And that meeting will be here.
At 7:00?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, moving on, council comments. Mike?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay. Jeff?
Yes, I was excited by the manager's weekly update that we got our ISO letter. We went from a six to a four in the last review. I think this is pretty much our first review we've had since we've added the ladder truck. There needs to be some time for that to be worked into the numbers. I just want to compliment the department on everything they did to work with ISO here and address it. Always felt that we had a good fire department. ISO, you have to make sure all the Is are dotted, Ts are crossed, to get all the credit that you're entitled to, and I definitely appreciate that we're getting that ladder truck a few years ago, upgraded the service. A lot of people, our businesses going from a six to four, will see, should see a benefit in that, and for some residential insurance rates who utilize the ISO rating system. Anybody who's not familiar with ISO, it's a rating from one to 10, so from six to four is a pretty good acknowledgement of what you're doing.
Dennis?
I agree with Jeff, and I just want to comment on that homecoming parade, again, and how important, I agree with you on tradition and keeping that alive. You can look back at the people that have been involved in that parade, you know, back 70, 80 years, so it seems like, and I know my mom was involved in the homecoming route back in the 50s, and she still talks about it today, so it's an event that needs to keep going.
Me?
Nothing tonight.
Jamie?
Nothing, sir.
Jim?
Oh, I have a couple things. Streetlights again. John, there was...
The ones that we've ordered, are you talking about the missing ones?
No, I'm talking about the ones that aren't lit.
Okay.
We have over 10 of them now. And have we contacted West Shore anymore on, you know, because it's...
Yeah, they'll be here this week.
It's got to be like six months that that siren has not worked properly, I mean...
I got an email last week, they'll have someone here this week.
Okay. And have we heard any more on the fire truck?
Yes, the pump is being delivered October 16th, I believe, 14th or 16th.
Okay.
I heard 16th.
Yep.
Yep.
We discussed it at the fire committee, and I also met with the fire chief on it, and we're looking at everything that's happened to this point, and I'll be discussing that with the contractor, but at this point, kind of staying the course is probably the fastest way to get that truck back in service.
I understand.
At this point, and that pump is being delivered on the 16th.
Okay. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Scarecrows are going up. Looks like Richmond's getting ready for fall. Is our fall banners up already? Yes, they are, aren't they? Very good. Go ahead, Jim, take credit.
It's not my credit, my guys did it.
Oh, okay. Well, we appreciate them doing it on a timely basis. We had a little touch of the fall there this weekend. We're supposed to warm back up for the homecoming, as we mentioned earlier, and hopefully everybody will come out and support the parade, which will be at 5:00. It will start on, over at BB Park, come up Washington Street to Main Street, Main Street down to Division into the school. That's at 5:00 on Main Street. Come out and support it, whatever it takes. We need some people out there to show that we still do care about traditions in our community. Moving on to the October 11th through the 16th, the DPW will be flushing fire hydrants throughout the week, and you may see some discoloration of the water, and you just want to be careful, especially when you're washing. That tends to possibly put some streaks on your clothes or dots on your clothes from some of the mineral that has let loose, but it's safe to drink, safe to cook, and water's fine. So that'll be happening from October 11th through the 16th. On October 11th, the Richmond Volunteer Fire Department will be holding their open house, and that will be at the fire hall. They will be serving pancake breakfast from 7:00 to 12:00. The open house with a lot of different things going on with the old fire truck ride and demonstrations will be from 12:00 to 3:00. And I believe there's going to be some hot dogs and some other things available at that time, Jaws of Life demonstration, there'll be a bake sale, and just a lot of different demonstrations. So that is on October 11th, starting at 7:00 in the morning for breakfast. And then October 24th, at our last... And then October 24th, at our last city council meeting, we gave the okay for Running with the Devils 5K. That's October 24th. It's a fundraising event for the high school football coach, Coach Coker, as he's battling cancer, and also will help in funding the RHS track and cross-country program. You can register the day of at 8:00. That, I think, John, that one starts at the high school, does it not?
Correct. I believe it's starting right in front of the middle school, just to the, it'd be the west of that traffic circle.
Okay.
I believe it's where the race will start. I think somewhere in that general area will be where the registration is.
Okay. And you can preregister at Allstate Insurance on Main Street with Jennifer Viewer at the high school itself, through the cross-country track coach, Tom Brown, or online. And maybe, maybe we can get that put on to the tape. It's quite a lengthy online, whatever you call that, website or...
Yep, web address.
Yeah, and that's being sponsored by Allstate here in Richmond. So Coach Coker's putting up a great fight, and we wish the best for him also and for the event. And we'll go to the calendar here. Today being October 5th, tomorrow, as mentioned, will be a special meeting of the Parks and Recreation Department Commission at 6:00 p.m., which will begin at the Senior Center, and it's a walk-through to look at our parks. Week from, no, I'm sorry, on the 13th, the city council will have its quarterly workshop meeting starting at 5:30 here at City Hall. The EDC will be meeting on the 15th. I may have skipped the Cable Commission. Have we heard if they're meeting on the 15th?
I believe they are.
Okay, the Cable Commission will be meeting on the 13th, right here at 7:00 at City Hall. And Community Theater Celebration that we mentioned at the last council meeting, their 50th anniversary, they will be celebrating that on Saturday, the 17th. Tickets are available at the Richmond Flower Shop for that celebration. And two weeks from tonight will be our next regularly-scheduled city council meeting. Is there anything else that we need to add to the calendar this evening? Being not, we'll move on. Is there any other business of the city council this evening? Being not, motion adjourned, be in order.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Support.
It's been made and supported. There is no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thanks for being with us.